Can somebody text Bud and see where he is?
On the bottom.
Call the November 3rd Township meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance fee, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, good folks.
Just get it in your pocket.
New agenda items, we have any?
No, we're fresh out.
We have any public comment? No public.
No, I took that off because you got so mad about that, Bruce.
Cog budget Emmy and Eric and Joe.
I'll let Eric and Joe talk about it. I will just note that our share of the budget increased 6.90% over last year and I'll let them hit the highlights.
So I'll just kick this off with a couple of quick remarks. Since Bud's not here, Bud was an active participant in the Finance Committee this year as the budget was reviewed. As you're all very familiar, the budget process started in the spring with the preparation of the program plan. We visited and talked about items that were listed in the program plan and then comments were reviewed and digested. Along the way, the detailed budget was prepared and that was reviewed over a series of meetings with the Finance Committee. And on page 12 of the document, there's a list of items that were deferred or modified as a result of the conversation with the Finance Committee over a series of meetings and then concluding during their wrap-up meeting earlier in October. And so some things were delayed or modified to achieve some savings and budget reductions within the cog budget in a variety of ways. And if you want, I can go through each of those or Joe and I can answer questions along the way. But I think we got to a point where the Finance Committee was satisfied with the results and happy to move this forward to review and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on page 12?
Oh, on his?
Yeah, on the, oh, you don't have that summary, Dr.?
No, I printed some stuff out. I have here. No, I don't, I don't have anything on the bullet points, but I'll have some other comments.
Joe has a copy if you want. That's quickly.
Yeah, I have other comments when we get down to the numbers.
I had nothing on page 12, George. Eric.
Just general questions?
Bud just pulled one by the way. Don't ask, don't even ask.
Have you been drooling a lot again?
I told you, I was right in the middle of changing a serpentine belt in my truck and I forgot about the time.
I'm glad you got dressed up for it.
I did. Yeah, go ahead, fine. Okay, I guess I'm gonna hit, I mean, I look at all of them. Not real pleased with, you know, the amount of increase that's gone on in the last year or so because of, you know, we took the 3% ceiling off, what, two years ago, three years ago? And for the first couple of years, it worked fine, but it seems like we're just jumping in numbers. And the one number that really jumps out at me is the cog administrative operating budget. It's jumping $107,000 this year. I think that's a big number. That's like 38%. I can understand that you have, and that does include the two hires that's in there because that's in the, that's in the personnel budget, which is going up 10% roughly. But I just look at that operating capital. I'm like, why are we going up 100,000, almost 38% in operating budget in the administration? I mean, if we, if we need to look at some ways to streamline, I think we need to do that, but that's a big number for, you know, 37, 36.82, 37%. That's a pretty good sized number. It's on, I have it on the office administrative budget, the actual.
What's your little page number?
It is page 25 in the summary.
Okay, I follow.
Because, because if I look at it, when you're looking at it, we have $103,000 at the beginning of the year in the fund balance. At the beginning of the next year, we have a negative 50,000. So we're sucking up all our fund balance in one year. I, like I said, I don't know what's doing all that, but I'm not real keen with that, yes.
Joe Vigilone, Cog Finance Director. You've got a few items in which you've talked about there. Frank, the first one is the fund balance. We budget each year to a zero fund balance in the operating budget. So that's been something that's been in place since before I started here. So that is not atypical to budget down and utilize all the fund balance because it is used as an offset of municipal contributions. While the expenses have gone up, there are four prime, in the operating side of the administration budget, there are two primary reasons for those. The first one is the IT study. The General Forum voted to move forward with the IT study with about a third of the cost in 2021 with the remainder of the cost in 2022, and that is the remainder of the cost. And then the second thing that is impacting that operating number is the, it ran out of my head real quick, it'll come right back, the comp and class study, which was put forward to look at the job descriptions and the pay ranges for all cog employees. And that is actually going to be funded using one-time dollars out of the insurance reserve fund and it's not coming forward via municipal contributions.
And what are we gonna achieve by the?
The comp class study? What's that gonna do?
So by the time the study gets underway in 2022, it will have been 17 years since there's been a benchmarking and review of the salaries of all of the cog staff. Now there, there were isolated studies done, I think, three or four or five years ago, there was a look at, at some of the code staff when there was some concern there. We've, we've done some, some moves on lifeguards to try and keep pace. But we have a number of, of our positions where we're not sure whether the job descriptions and the work that's being performed are aligned. So we, the classification part will be to review the classifications for, for cog staff and then we'll be doing benchmarking and salary surveys to make sure we're properly compensating all of the cog staff. And as I said before, it's been approximately 17 years since that's been done. So we know we're out of pace competitively for, for probably a number of those staff. Many of the municipalities in the area do that every two to three or four years and we're, we're way behind where we should be on that. It was proposed to have been done this year and was delayed during last year's budget because of some of the concerns related to the COVID impacts on the municipal budget. So we pushed that off for a year. And as Joe said, one of the things that was discussed in the budget meeting was to fund it differently. So it's coming out of the insurance reserve fund.
My question would be this, you know, do we, do we have a big employee turnover?
We, we, we do have some employee turnover, but, but more significantly, we have difficulty attracting and recruiting right now because we, I don't think we're as competitive as we should be in particularly challenging, difficult positions to fill such as the park maintenance positions, code positions, those sorts of things where, where we, we are not necessarily where we think we need to be in terms of the market and competitive with other employers.
And I, I know there are some positions. I'm familiar with some of them, you know, from my scouting background and my camp things. I know that camp staffs are well underpaid. The swim, it's very difficult to get swim staff and all that in the summer. I understand all that. But in all the years I was in management from like 1970 on, I don't think I ever paid for one of those. But I was able to keep up with it by, you know, paying attention to my employees and what they needed. And I just, I'm just sure that we need to have some input on that. But I'm, why do we always have to pay for studies, I guess is my question? Why can't we do it? I mean, we have a staff, we should do it. But that's just my comment on it.
Can I comment on that?
Sure, sure.
HR perspective? Yeah, we've talked, we've talked about this a lot at Human Resources and that, yeah, the last study 17 years ago and I'm a dinosaur old enough to be in that one too, McGrath Consulting. And that did a really good job getting us back on pace and getting us good pay and pay plan and all these great job descriptions. But yeah, we haven't necessarily been keeping up. And so, and you know, we, we had partial studies wouldn't have seen a concern, but the only reason we've attracted some quality people recently is just because they want to come here, not because of our pay and benefit package. They could do better elsewhere. And we can't do that and continue to have quality people in our, you know, important positions. So I think it's something we just have to do. And overall, if you look at it a percentage of the, the big picture, even if you look at it as a percentage of the total payroll, that's really not that much. It is a big increase right now, but it is because of those two projects. So I think it has to be done.
Exactly. Refuge Authority is in the process of just beginning what we do in every 10 years and we do the strategic plan. And for that, they, we have about the same number of employees. We have 67 employees. It's just felt to be something that makes people along the line. Bud, everything?
Well, I'll take, we take all that back. We, we've discussed all this very much in our meetings and we sort of reached a happy medium. The, the original prospect was to hire two new people this year, but I think we acquiesced and we're gonna hire an administrator, which I think we really need. And then later on in the year, I guess, we're gonna look at your HR person. So that helps. It was worse than this, believe me, when we first started this. I'm with you, I agree. We, I made that statement before. We like to keep our cog budget an even keel because we like to see it so that doesn't, as far as I'm aware of, none of the cog budgets have made any missteps raise their taxes. So we want to keep it that way. And administration is tough, a tough one to handle because we, with all programs, you get administration heavy after a while. So we do have to watch that. As far as, one thing though, I was thinking about, a lot of these studies and things that go up, we, a lot of those things were put in there, that $250,000 for a study for the Millbrook Marsh, $75,000 or maybe more than that for air, air, air handlers or air, whatever, air quality control. And there was another, it escapes my mind what the other one was, that those are money to put in there. Oh, $75,000 for the climate action if they needed, if they needed some money to spend. So there, there's, there's a chunk of change that we don't know if we're gonna spend all that money. We, we, 75 in case we need it, air purifier, 75 in case we need it, 250 for nature study in case we need it. So I'm, I'm just wondering if we could look at those and say, those may not need to be spent until we get to that point. And I'm frank, but the budget had, we started out like a six, six and a half percent budget. And I think we're down to four point something percent now or whatever it is.
Yeah, it is down to 4.63%.
Okay, and it was six point something.
I don't have that number with me.
That's what I, that's what I judge this budget by. But you want to, and they have to justify everything within that budget. And they have pretty much. You always, you come up with some good, good reasons for all this. So the only thing I can think is that what, what might be beneficial for us is not pay for these things until it's needed. In other words, this, these, this 300, 300 and some thousand, whatever all those numbers are, it has to be, are in our, are in our, in our budget and that's what we're committed. We're built for it quarterly. So I would say hold off on that, those things until they're needed. And maybe on our third quarterly payment, look at that and say, did we spend that money? We got burnt with the library a number of years ago. I'd say we got burnt, but we, the number of years that we committed a what-if money. And this is, these are what-if monies. That bothers me. What-if money at the library is $85,000 or $9,000 in case we didn't, they didn't spend it, but we gave them the money anyhow. So that, that, if these three, these three or four items, if we could these three, these three or four items, if we could, should say, look, are we going to need those, let's justify them as we need them. I think that would help us a little bit. Yeah.
Just to speak to that, the only one that you will be billed for this year is going to be the, um, the climate action and sustainability study through the planning department. The funds for the indoor air quality at the library and the cog building are both funded through insurance reserve refund dollars.
Well, what's his money is that?
That has always come back to, it's come back in and off set premiums and different things along that lines. But we funded it in, in that mechanism. You will not get a bill for that this year. And then the other one, the study for the boardwalk is also, um, proposed to be, um, a borrowing from probably the fire capital program if it would go forward, which you would not receive a bill until 2023 for in terms of municipal repayments. I do understand that your point, Bud, and it's, it's well made, it's well taken. But I just wanted to be clear, based upon how we're funding some of these items, the municipal impact, the dollars we're asking for will only be coming for one of them this year, and otherwise they'd be coming in future years.
Well, that, that, that is true, but it's still, it's still paying me now or paying me later. And I think that if we move judicial on those, on that 300,000 dollars, uh, I, I don't agree with the 75,000 for climate action because they don't know what they're going to spend it on yet. Like, it's in, it's if we need it. And that, and that bothers me. Maybe don't bill us for it until maybe, until it's actually what, I get an actual figure, which would be maybe the end of the year. So those are, those are the comments that I have. Uh, it's, you gotta be careful. Frank is right. It, we gotta keep this budget so everybody can live with it. We, we want to be able to keep, not have anybody suffer from being part of the cog. The idea is we joined this to get good purchasing power, to get good this, and then all of a sudden these studies come in and say, where is the efficiency on this? So you're right. But, but we, I don't know what else to say about this budget.
But we also don't like big surprises.
Yes.
And things that suddenly, suddenly put on our table and we say, well, we didn't, didn't budget for that. I'd prefer I ever get in here and.
Well, that's okay if they spend it, but if they don't spend it, yes, yes, yes. I don't mind leaving, that's, that's my point. Leave it in the budget and then, but maybe not bill us for it until it comes time to spend actually. You may not, you may, maybe only one of the 25,000 dollar study for this, for the climate action. With maybe only 200 or maybe 150 for nature study. I don't know any of that. So that's what I'm saying. We can maybe as we go on the year, monitor those things and maybe not have to spend that much money.
How do, how are those numbers determined? What it's talking about in terms of market value?
So the, the, the study for the climate action and adaptation program, it's, it's consultant expertise to help with the implementation. And so the, there will be an RFP that's developed. So the, the 75,000 is a projection. Uh, the committee will review the RFP, uh, after the new, in the new year, the RFP will be released. It may be that, uh, the consultant costs come, are broken out into, you know, one or two or three different consultants, depending on responses to the RFP, and those awards will come through the normal process. And so, uh, it, it may be that, that this is phased out over the course of one year or into the next year. Uh, but I, I talked with Jim earlier this week about the development of the RFP to procure that. Uh, the, uh, phase two for the, uh, Millbrook Marsh Nature Center, that was a recommendation that came out of phase one. So there's a projected cost to develop the, the, the next step for the boardwalk. There is, uh, efforts underway to look at grants and potentially donations that could help with that phase of the, the project. So, uh, the, the expenditure will be a net, uh, that we're pretty sure it's the two, what, 225?
250.
250.
Maybe I said 220.
I, I said 250. Four, but it's 225. You're right. I, I keep exaggerating on that.
But, and so hopefully the, you know, there may be some ways to reduce that, that cost through, through grants and donations, but that's the, the maximum that's projected for that phase of the study.
Yeah, but a couple things. Uh, one is, I, now, on the Millbrook Marsh, the 225, I, that came through facilities and I'm very familiar with that. Part of that issue with that is in order for us to fix that boardwalk, there's, there's heavily, heavily, heavily involved DEP presence. And one of the things they require before we start digging holes and putting posts in is that, that 225. So it kind of starts that process and, and we're going to have to do it sooner or later. So I understand that one. But to Bud's point, you know, we have, over the years, we've had like the 75, the 85. I think first year we were on facilities, we got 50,000. We didn't know, we just got 50,000. We, I don't think we ever even spent it, to be quite honest that I can remember. But the point I'm saying is here in the township, we did our special projects fund. Part of our tax, we dedicated to it. And that's where we get these special projects when they come through. Maybe the cog needs to look at that for these studies and things that, that instead of trying to let that budget do this every year, we put it in special projects and we either fund it or it, it, it carries over or whatever. Maybe that would ease all this and less discussion on these one. And when somebody would need a, uh, a study or whatever, they would have to come and get it, you know, get it approved to come out of the special projects. But that's just a comment that it might be a good way of handling this, that you don't have the cycles.
And if the special project fund is exhausted.
Yeah.
That's the start you go.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
Or you.
Or you can replenish it.
Replenish here, that, yes. And that's not, and we're starting to hear some more along that lines with some of the long-range planning and coordination. Um, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job in addressing, um, the vehicle replacement and the timing aspects of that and getting buy-in along that lines. We've done, uh, made some changes and I think very positive on the facility side with the hiring of, uh, Mr. Brungard to start bringing us along on that one so that there are less surprises versus what we've had previously. So we may not be happy with the price tag, but at least there's a theory behind it. So for instance, you know, the indoor air quality, uh, thing that Bud talked about, we took that through and that came up through Don Frank. And then, um, he said we should probably look a little further than just interviews that I had with manufacturers. And Reese Hackman looked at it. And then Lou took another swing at it with his background on the medical side. So we got to where we are in that fixed numbers for those improvements thoughtfully. Whether it belongs in there or not, that's you guys' policy decision within there. So we've made improvements on the capital side that I think are very good and will pay dividends down the line. But you, Harris Township is hitting on an issue that we've talked about a number of times as well with other municipalities. And there has never been a consideration in terms of the cost of adding new positions, the cost of adding, um, you know, these studies beyond the year of the budget. So we've only looked at it in the 2022 year. We have not taken it out of five-year look. And that's a great piece of information and advice and something we should really consider doing. And it could possibly very, very possibly, and I would even think likely, help smooth exactly what you guys are saying right there.
I will tell you this, the facilities committee, we, we started at point zero and we, we had a big uphill climb. Where we're at right now, we're just about ready to go over the top. You, you've seen the, the, the monies that we have in there for the, uh, the capital for like the pools. We're starting to see that, we're starting to get results back from these, uh, assessments we're doing, that here's how much it costs just to keep the, the facility the way it is today, how to maintain the facility. So you're seeing, I think it's like 200 grand, I think I remember for the pools, but there's a number. And we're going to come, you're going to start seeing those for just about every facility we have. So in the long run, right now, you might see some spikes and whatnot, but in the long run, you're going to see that level out. I, I think that in the next three or four years, you're going to see that we're going to get a list of, here's how much it costs for the, the cog building, the pools, the parks, you know, what, what that number we have to come up with every year to maintain those facilities. So I think that'll help in the long run, but I think we've got to get through this, you know, jumping up and down.
Presentation Lou did at the forum on the Whitehall Park was the first time we've had, bless you, we've had a, almost an engineering kind of perspective with, with what's going to be done. And I think that helped because, you know, for a year and a half, we've sort of talked about the what-ifs of we, but Lou was talking about things in the ground. And the things in the ground are the ones that cost us a lot. So I like, I like that approach.
Right. And as Joe said, I think we are trying to take a longer, uh, perspective on things. And, and when we generate the program plan, look into the future, next year, hopefully we'll be able to build in not only what we expect for 2023, but at least the first look at future, uh, capital projects, future studies, future staff that may be needed in, in, in the years beyond 2023. We may not have an exact job title or exact cost figure, but at least we can start giving you all, uh, the, the look ahead and say, you know, we think in this year we'll, we'll have gotten to the point where we need to add this person, or it will be time based on the projections, uh, needed to, to expand this, this building or that. So we are trying to take a longer-term view just like we do in the capital improvement program for staffing and studies and, and other things that are going to be big ticket items so that, uh, you don't get caught with that just in, in June, in July, when you start to see the program plan.
And rather than having people also give you an idea down the road, four to five years about retirements, because that's an opportunity to possibly save some, uh, some salary money.
Well, my, my comment was, I, I don't mind leaving these things in the budget. It's about 350 or 400,000 dollars of what-if monies, uh, if, if we only pay them if, if that is what's needed. Because, well, number one, I'm not sure. I, I haven't heard from Jim May what exactly you're going to spend 75,000 dollars on this climate action study. There's nothing really to study. Uh, the state has already done it. They, they have, they have a climate action thing. They've done all the studies. And I said before, they've got all the experts. We've got, we have a tag, we have a, a tag committee, a technical advisory committee. Maybe there's something come up, we need to spend 75,000 dollars for, but I don't know what it would be. But if they want, what-if money, let's, let's count that, that's 300,000 or 350,000, what-if, and not, and not bill us until it's needed. Maybe it may be the second quarter or third quarter, maybe in the fourth quarter if we, if we need it. That I think would help even this budget out a little bit. Uh, but I don't mind leaving it in there to start with.
Bruce, imagine what?
Over the years, I've seen the cog do a lot of studies.
Yeah.
And not to be facetious, but I almost think we need a study of our studies. Um, you know, certainly if we're talking about some program and make costs, uh, you know, $500,000 and spending 50 or 75,000 dollars to, to see if we're doing it right and if we're being efficient, makes sense. But sometimes I fear we spend money on studies either so we kind of have cover that, well, they told us what to do. And maybe sometimes we, we need to take a risk and even like, well, let's go ahead and do what we think is right. And, you know, what's the return on investment on those studies? Are we, are we getting our money's worth from those studies? Or should we be making the decisions in-house with our in-house expertise? And perhaps taking a risk that we could have been a little more efficient on some of them, but does that loss of efficiency cover for all those extra studies? So it's kind of a, like I said, uh, please don't hire an outside consultant to do a study of our studies.
I'll apply for it.
Point, point taken, point made. And yes, you, you can take a look at it that way. You know, I'm just going to go back to, um, what Denny and Frank were saying about Lou and, you know, we could have studied and we probably should have made some better decisions previously on our facilities. Lou has plugged a huge hole that we had had in the organization to bring forward. So sometimes investing in personnel and study definitely does pay off, but the point is also made on the other side. And, uh, more specifically to Bud's point, what he's proposing in terms of that 75,000 dollars for planning, maybe something to bring forward because at, um, in the 2021 budget, that was brought forward as a request in terms of looking at the actual timing in the billings for the study, I believe. It wasn't a study, it was the Spring Creek Education Building over there and whether or not we needed to start funding it in January, or whether we could push the municipal contributions to the third and fourth quarter of 2021, which was proposed. So sometimes timing of this can be impacted one way or another. Um, we're pretty late in the, in, in the process now, but, um, that would be more of a billing type of thing if we would not decrease what it is. We would just build them later on in the year rather than earlier on in the year.
I'll say, I, I think Lou.
Um, kind of goes right to my point. Cause Lou is a great hire, but he's doing stuff in-house. What I worry about is when we go outside, and I've worked as a consultant, and I'm not cheap.
You're easy, but not cheap.
And just to add on to what Bruce is saying, I, I don't think Frank was on the board back then, but when we got to the point where we knew we needed to do something with, we were at critical mass with our maintenance department, our maintenance department, we needed trucks, we needed a facility, we were going, knew we were in need to hire people, I did that strategic plan. And the board sat down, down then and talked about it. And we used it to implement every single thing we've done after that. We hired an extra employee a couple of years ago. We built the new maintenance facility. We put it, our dedicated, uh, money aside for our trucks. So I think what Bruce is saying, there's a ton of value in not just, and I've seen it in the 17 years I've been the manager here. I think the cog throws money at studies to do studies. And Lou saved us a ton of money because facilities, he's come in and has kind of taken the reins on that. But some of this other stuff, I mean, I understand the compensation study, that's a highly specialized thing, but I almost feel like the cog, general forum itself needs to sit down and have a conversation about where it's going and where the growth of the cog is going. Because the cog is not a municipality. The cog is selling services to the six municipalities. And, you know, if you're impacting our budgets, which you do, that's a problem.
Well, what about this? Well, okay, let's, we're talking about this, this present budget. We're not talking about philosophical in the future. Well, what, uh, what are we going to present forward, the recommendations for this year's budget?
For, for this one?
That would be for the 2022 budget, yes.
Well, that's a part of the budget.
Suggestions. Yeah, I think, keeping those three and, and just holding our reserves to where we need it.
I, I think our message is this. I think that, you know, we want to make sure that we're getting bang for our buck in our budgets. And I think Bud, what Bud's saying makes a lot of sense. You know, we need to, we need to make sure that, that we're doing this. Cause I, one of the things I see from Harris Township's standpoint is of all the things we have going on in a township that would, could affect our budget or our taxes, cog's the biggest threat we have as far as where, where the biggest amount of money increase in a year could come from.
See, I would call it, I wouldn't use, I'd use.
Well, whatever. It's, it's, it's.
There's a negative, negative.
Future opportunity. How's that?
Future opportunity.
A sit-down. Future opportunity. How's that?
Yeah. Well, the thing is, number one, it's our library, it's our library, it's, it's our planning commission. It, it's not the cog's, it's ours.
Right, exactly.
And, and what I am concerned about is that, that administration sneaks up too high. It is, the efficiency of running a library diminishes. But the, we do need, we do need this, some of this stuff, but we do need that much, I guess. That's, that's.
And determining that correct amount is difficult.
It is difficult until it comes time to do it and just put it in the budget and bill us for it. Bill us that, that, that 250,000, well, that 75,000 dollars quarterly doesn't make sense.
And cap it at that.
Well, I, well, I, well, I mean, let me expound on that a little bit. I cannot delight at me think why we'd have to spend money to do this climate. I, I haven't seen this, I haven't, I'm on the committee. We haven't gotten the nuts and bolts of this climate action yet, what not, what to do and what not to do. But it's all these are recommendations, all these things that this is what we should do. I, I'm not sure. Well, I guess it remains to be seen what we can spend any money to implement that action, what we don't need to know or what we can't find out through, through the state. The state has pages that thick of their references where they got the information. So that's just, that's my point on that. But as a general budget, I, I like the idea, put them these things in the budget, go for it, but paying only when we need it.
So it sounds, I'm sorry, I just, it sounds like we have Bud's comment about putting the things in the budget, but only billing us for them when we need them when they're spent. Frank had the comment about, and I like the comment about the cog considering creating a special projects fund to, to help look at some of this stuff long-term. And then Bruce had the comment about concerned about the amount of studies that the cog is doing every year.
Nice.
Five?
Okay, okay. It made sense.
You, I think you've, you've, you've done a good job of reflecting those.
Okay.
Understand where we are?
I do.
We'll, we'll await the, the notes from Amy and we'll incorporate them in the review for the executive committee and the general forum.
I will say that, that while our, our, I think for the first time in many years, we've had to go into our final session because we were very disagree, had not reached a consensus on a lot of things. And we sat down, we did reach consensus. We gave a little bit, they gave a little bit. And the budget we printed forward, probably is about as good as you're going to get. The, the personnel thing was a three-three tie, which, so we had, we had, we had a little bit of, get a little, we want to get at least everybody except maybe one person on board. So everybody was on board on this, so.
Well, and I, I would just echo one of the things that Bud said earlier, that this is not us and them. The, you know, cog is providing the services, uh, for the municipalities and we're, uh, I, I know I'm, I'm new, but one of the things I, I notice and, and really appreciate is the thorough review through committees like the HR committee, like the finance or, uh, facilities committee. Um, all of the different committees are looking at these recommendations as they come through the process. And, and there is a description that was, uh, in the program plan as well as in the, uh, comment guide, uh, for the program plan about the potential consultant for the climate action. adaptation plan, but that won't be moving forward until it comes back to the committee, and so committees will have another bite at the apple to take a look at each of these things as they come forward. So we'll continue to keep this process where we engage the elected officials through the committees, and you'll know what's happening when the time comes.
And we need to kind of all the committee reps, as that begins at the committee level, to get it back to Harris Township, to keep it in perspective with what we're talking about.
Well, there's one thing you've got to keep in mind, too, now, our, our cog budget is twenty-nine million, what is it, something like twenty-nine million dollars.
Including fund balance.
Including everything, well, our cog budget this year is twenty, and our share is five, whatever, I forget what it is.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
And so of that, of that money we spent, we leveraged twenty-eight million, twenty-nine million dollars with the money, so it's pretty, so far it's a pretty good deal for the dollar, as long as we keep track of, keep in mind.
And a lot of our refund, our happiness factors for the residents, pools, libraries, parks and recs.
The rec apartment, I know it's growing exponential, it's growing, but it's what our people want, it's what we want, and we are actually a few years behind, if you go to other municipalities, other valleys, they're way ahead of us. So we are actually behind on our fields and our facilities, and so.
What we're behind is caution.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, but I can just say, we do hear and we are listening to the message, but, you know, just your continued patience and communication and help doing this, I think Frank will attest, we didn't know where we were at the start of the facilities committee in 2018, we knew we had to do things better, and it's been three and a half years, and we're doing things better. It didn't happen overnight, so just a continued patience, and we'll get there, and because we are listening and we want to.
I think it was that first chair.
He did an awesome job.
Who might have.
I don't know. I have it for Harris Township.
What such talents we have here. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Item, it's interesting, we have two items, three's on the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, we'll change that last one to four, okay.
Maybe by four.
We're done, and we already did, I can see.
No, I'm sorry. Okay.
I've driven this four, so, okay, Amy?
So I'll brief the go-over what we talked about last week. I did follow up on Bud's question that he had, and also since Nigel wasn't here. So we approved the following requests from the public, five hundred dollars to fourth best, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to the BBC for Memorial Day and Hometown Christmas, two hundred and fifty dollars to Leadership Center County, two hundred dollars to the CCATO Scholarship Fund, one hundred dollars to the Get Outdoors Day event, five hundred and ninety-one dollars to the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, that's an increase because of our census numbers, two hundred and fifty dollars to the Center County Economic Development Partnership, five hundred dollars for a bench in honor of the blacksmith, and twenty-five percent of the Penn State Campus Weather Programming on CNET. We also updated the salary for the board, because you get a raise now that we have five, over five thousand residents officially, so you go to twenty-five hundred dollars a year, please don't spend it all in one place.
Do I pay for all the frustration?
Bruce has his ticket stored, everybody. You're going to a Uber, you say?
Yeah, that'll get him halfway there. And then we gave you some revised budget sheets in the packet, and Bud asked that we look at when we paved Bolzberg Pike, because we spread it out over three years, Bud asked if we could realize some cost savings if we put it all into one project. So our township engineer, Jerry Northridge, actually reached out to a couple of paving contractors in the area and asked them that question. The issue that we run into is twofold. When you go over a hundred thousand dollars on a paving project, you have to pay prevailing wage. So while the estimate with the three roads, with the three years lumped together is two hundred thousand dollars, it's really more like two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars with the prevailing wage added on. Additionally, one of the contractors said, you know, these smaller projects are actually better, because you then get more contractors to bid on it, because not everybody can handle a large project, there's only a couple of contractors that can handle it, so, and then, secondly, we only get about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, I think, this year, this coming year, in liquid fuels tax money, so we would really have to look at spending a year or two where we didn't do any projects, so that we would save the money to have the money to complete that one project. So we think from a staff perspective, it makes sense for those reasons to continue on with doing it. I know it's piecemeal, that's not great, but it also follows that waterline project, so as they complete new sections, the next section of the road will be paved.
Well, the problem, other issue is that they won't be done for three years, and the upper part.
You mean the total?
Yeah, the total, they won't be done with their water, company won't have been done with their project for three years, or whatever it is, so we didn't want to wait three years to start that, so that's another projection.
Well, staging costs are expensive.
Well, yeah.
Staging three times versus one.
Yes, yes.
So if we're okay, we'll just keep it as we have it.
Unless the water throes moves any faster, which I doubt they will.
I mean, and the nice thing is, the worst part of that road right now is from Kimport to the park entrance, so we'll be able to get that taken care of.
All the way down?
Yeah, we'll be able to get that taken care of next year, and then we can adjust if we need to.
Are the water lines done all the way down to the park?
Yes, they're done from, they're done from Apollo down to Lee, they didn't do the upper portion, they had done those a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Questions, gentlemen?
I got a light to bring up. We joined PML because it seemed like it was going to be a better fit for the type of township we are. I know that Bud and Frank, I hear, enjoyed and found valuable.
Much better breakout sessions.
Sessions I went to. So I just want to ask why we continue to spend money with PSATS? We have a duplication of our cost of membership, we have a duplication of paying for staff and supervisors to attend these events. Do we need to be part of both of these? If we switch to PML because it was a better fit for us, then let's go with PML.
PML's not, I like it, but I think they offer a lot more, yes, they do, I've been to both, and they're both, but the municipal league seems to have done, does a much better, I'm not quite sure how you want to say it, professional, I don't know what to say.
Well, I think when you go to PML, the sessions, the breakout sessions, the presentations, the general forum type presentations, they're more to what we do, you know, and PSATS is more to like what Donnie does, you know, it's more to the, yeah, the guys that are out going the asphalt paving and that, but from our standpoint, and I think I've got more out of PML in the last couple of years going there than that, and I think we have a better voice at PML. I mean, I'm on the legislative committee, Amy, you're on the board, so we get a lot more, we get a lot more input as a school township there.
It's seminars and stuff is one of them, on page B1.
Where's that in?
Dwight has it, right?
It should be in the descriptions for the B.
It's probably their dues and subscriptions, four hundred something.
Yeah. I mean, I know it's not a huge amount of money, but it sends me a duplication. It's unnecessary.
Oh, it might be in the general. Due subscriptions and memberships, they're all lumped together.
It just says.
We have five thousand dollars in B2, and that's probably, I'm sure that's probably PML, PSATS.
Well, you have, under the description, you have PSATS, PML, Cato, ICMA, and APMM.
Yes, APMM is the association.
And we also have expenses for meetings, conferences, and seminars, so for paying for transportation and entrance fees.
So what's your pleasure? I forget how much, I don't remember how much our PML dues are, I think, I know we stepped into them, remember, when they offered us membership?
Yeah, they stepped it up.
Three years, four years?
It's three or four, I don't know what it is, and I think our PSATS membership is, can you pull that up, do you know?
Yeah.
Okay, Dwight will pull that up.
I don't see that.
It's all lumped into that one category.
Well, I guess the question is, you know, we've pretty much said what we get out of PML, what are we getting out of PSATS these days? As far as, I know Cato is part of PSATS, that, you know, so we do get the input from Cato on.
But I will say that Ferguson Township has never been a member of PSATS, and they go to the CCATO meetings and participate in CCATO, so you don't have to be a member of PSATS to participate in the County Township Association.
Oh, no, you don't, that's right.
Well, the other way to look at it is, what can Harris Township contribute to PSATS? Do we have any value, you know, on a larger scale, and, you know, statewide that could ultimately come around and benefit? Because PSATS pushes a lot of, pushes for certain legislation that may benefit the township.
So I will say this about PSATS, PSATS doesn't do a lot of what we do. In fact, a lot of what we do is very contrary to PSATS, the regional stuff they don't like, they don't understand. We've tried to pitch information on the emergency management stuff that we do, they said that no one's interested in that, they, that's not what they push. So I don't know, PML is the leader in terms of lobbying in the state of Pennsylvania, they have Senator Yaw, who's the head of the local government side of things, they have his ear, they work cooperatively with PSATS and PSAB to look at legislation that matters, so PSAB is the boroughs association. So I don't know, I mean, I stopped going to the PSATS conference years ago, because PML is a better fit for what I do.
And I do, I'm on the legislative committee, and one of the things that, when we have our meeting, we do our resolutions meeting and that at every event, and when you're sitting around the room, you have everybody from our size to the city of Philadelphia, and you get that total input, and when you come out of those resolutions, that's what we go lobby for, so we get a pretty good understanding of what the whole state wants to do.
I understand, that was just a question, that was a good explanation, I do get that PSATS is geared, I haven't been really involved, but I do understand that it's pretty much geared towards smaller townships, where the supervisors are actually doing a lot of the legwork that we pay professionals to do, so we don't need to learn about it.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I'm fine.
But interestingly, we're often seen as the leader in PSAT because of what we're doing.
Well, that's, yeah.
We're doing a presentation at PSATS this year on the sustainability project, because no one's, no one's done one in Pennsylvania.
Well, that's, and that's a good point for supporting it, I mean, how much do our dues really cost us, and how much does it cost us overall, and, you know, we've been maybe making a bigger impact in areas that we believe are good areas to make a positive impact in.
We did a presentation on our first trash and recycling contract, it's a ten-year contract, a five-year contract then, there's no one in Pennsylvania done one.
I just pulled up, the dues for 2022 for the municipal league are, we get a discount because we participate in Penn Prime, which is our insurance, so our dues next year are one thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents for PML. I think PSATS is around nineteen hundred dollars a year.
That was not broken down in here, is it?
No.
I just personally think it's a small price to pay to stay, you know, potentially involved in that, so I understand the concern.
Should we give a thought this year and get into 2023 and see what, put a red flag on it for this year?
We just don't use it, but I guess it might be in face, sooner or later maybe, but we don't use it anymore.
Yeah, then pointing out, like, you know, we are a leader, and, you know, we could make a positive influence overall, because, you know, we can lead some of these smaller municipalities into making better decisions for, you know, environment, all sorts of things, so.
PSATS was twelve hundred this year.
For next year? Right, red flag it.
Okay, so stay in PSATS, revisit for 23.
We're open for discussion. Um, the personnel item?
Yeah, so let's do that, and then we'll go to the.
Back to the first two sheets.
Yeah, and then we'll go to the maintenance department, if you have any questions about that. So we, there's a lot of personnel moving parts this year. We budgeted a four percent cost of living and up to one point five percent merit increases. Our colleagues are doing, College Township is doing a two percent COLA and a two percent merit, Patton is doing a four percent COLA and a one point two five percent merit, the cog is doing two point three percent COLA and zero to two percent merit, what's the borough doing?
Five point four.
Five point four percent COLA?
And two percent merit.
And two percent merit.
Five, four, two.
Five percent.
Yeah, five percent COLA.
Yeah, we, the borough basis is on CPI in July, which was five point four.
And that's, no. That largely negotiated with the ass meeting for the maintenance department, or?
No, that's, that would be non-union. That would be non-union?
That's the non-union, so, okay.
Yeah, so like last year was one percent COLA, so, you know, our argument is that if you go low, when it's low, when it's high, you can't jip it, you know, it's.
Yeah, I mean, their plans.
CPI as of July was five point four, last I looked, it was about five point two.
You, you, urban, or, you know, there's like five classes.
CPI U.
U, okay.
CPI U.
I think we did it by the, we averaged out during the year, didn't we? I forget how.
Yeah, we had a, we used social security for a while, then we used CPI, I don't know, we don't.
Well, I thought we did it, averaged out for the year, but I don't know how we did it.
That number in July was the twelve month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that five point four was the twelve month.
So social security, it would actually be six?
I think they said five was what they were giving social security.
It was about, it was about five.
Okay.
But, you know, that's funny money, too, so.
I'm comfortable with four percent. COLA and one point five, max.
You need to keep our employees well compensated, to keep them and keep them doing good work.
Okay, so you're good with the four and the one point five. Okay, then, a couple of other items. We included in the budget fifty cent per hour raises for both our new finance assistant and the new laborer when they complete their respective probationary periods. The laborer is also going to receive an additional twenty-five cents per hour raise when he receives his CDL, which he should be going for that here soon. And then we sent you, I sent you a copy of a job description, I would like to promote Nate Frye, who's currently our mechanic, I would like to promote him from mechanic to the newly created assistant road foreman position, his hourly rate would increase to twenty-eight dollars per hour with the promotion, he's at twenty-one something right now an hour.
Twenty-one seventy-one?
Twenty-one seventy-five an hour, now. The job description was in your packet, Nigel and I were on the phone sixteen times today, and he had some minor wordsmith changes, which I made. I would like you to, guys, to let me know and have you officially approve all of this if you're okay with it and with moving Nate forward, and I know Frank brought up a concern, and I just have to figure out how to write down what Frank said.
Well, my concern was this.
On the orange sheet.
On the orange sheet, the last line on the bottom, it says, maintain open lines of communication with the maintenance superintendent and the township manager as appropriate. The question I have there is, it almost implies that this position would have a straight line to the township manager. Now, I know the two guys that are involved in this, and I know that would never be an issue with them, but we're not always, technically, we may not always have those two guys doing it. I would have to have some kind of verbiage in there, I'd like to see some kind of verbiage in there, that would say that they would do that and notify the township manager, but also would have to re-notify the superintendent, so that there was, there was, you know, hey, I told Amy yesterday that this happened.
You're closing the loop there.
Yes, in other words, in other words, not give him, or him, her, or whatever, don't give them a free line item right to the township manager with excluding the manager. And I know the two guys we have would never do that, but like I said, we're writing, we're writing something that doesn't have a name on it, and I think that I'd like to see some verbiage there, change there.
Direct communication.
I'll give you resources.
Copy to the maintenance superintendent or something like that.
Exactly, something of that nature, yeah.
From your human resource cog committee perspective, is there anything in there that?
Couple of things that I pointed out, and.
What do you got?
The only things that I was looking at were, you know, were the maintenance of township vehicles.
Front page?
Front page, yeah, it's like it's the third bullet down under duties and responsibilities, sort of responsible, it says responsible for maintenance of township vehicles, and I wanted to add and equipment, township vehicles and equipment, because he fixes everything, and the other part is then, to add to that, like, he is going to be a mechanic in this position, he will be doing mechanic work, so just sort of add responsible for performance of maintenance of township vehicles and equipment, including ensuring preventative maintenance, yada, yada, yada.
And that was one of the strengths for hiring him, is maintenance of heavy equipment.
Right, and so, so that's why I want, you know, that should be in the job description, if he's going to be a mechanic, let's make sure it's in here that he's a mechanic.
Okay, the only question I will have on that, the only thing I'm, feedback, this, what you just wrote, we took assistant road foreman out and put Nate Frye in, are we going, let's say Nate goes away, whatever, and we have to hire somebody, are we going to have to lock our hands to fire, find a mechanic and a manager?
No, I think you have flexibility, because for example, when we had our old finance director, that finance director was a full-time job, they did a lot of stuff that Dwight does now. When we decided to move to a finance assistant position, we actually redid that job description. job description. We have the ability, if we decide if Nate moves up and he's the maintenance superintendent someday, we can look at this assistant road foreman, and maybe Nate goes, you know, I'm still really, like, I mean, he is so good with the mechanic stuff. Maybe I still want to do the performance of the maintenance on the trucks, and then we hire, we change this around. You still have all the flexibility.
I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, lock ourselves into a position where we're having to hire a mechanic and a.
We can change the job description anytime we want.
That maintenance does not take us to doing our own vehicle inspections. That's off-site?
We still do those off-site, yes. He doesn't do them.
We can't do that because we don't have a license to do.
Right, we have to get the shop certified to do that.
Okay.
Not sure that would be a.
It would be economically cost effective to do that, the cost of the thing, you know. Like it is, it is for the school district and their bus fleets, but, you know, that's 50 vehicles.
Right.
Paid $63 to get your trucks inspected.
Pardon?
You paid $63 recently to get your trucks inspected. It's cheap.
Yeah.
It's cheap.
To get certified by the state to be an inspector, have to, have to have him become certified. He might be already certified as a state inspector somewhere else, but, you know. We have to get our site certified, and that means having certain equipment that's inspected, you know, it's, yeah, no.
Any thoughts on the orange sheet?
No.
I think that's good. I was the only comment.
Anything on the orange sheet?
Can I get a motion that if you guys are comfortable with that?
Big, big, are we okay?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve this job description as amended.
Motion to approve was made by Frank.
I'll second it, but I have a question.
Nigel?
Second. I'll second it, but I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Amy, do you want us to do all that? The COLA, is that this motion for all that paragraph?
I want to do just separately this job description and Nate's promotion, and then we'll double back into the rest of personnel.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Any further discussion? Now, there we go. Any on favor, signature for a second? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Now, you want to do the 4% COLA issue?
Yeah, do the COLA.
Okay. Motion?
I move that we, this budget includes a 4% COLA and a merit increase of up to 1.5% for our employees.
I'll second, I'll second that. Open for discussion?
I have any discussions. I would, yes for that, but I'd like to see how our manager has a little more discretion. One and a half, maybe, you know, sometimes maybe someone does a good job, may want to give them more than that. I don't know how we would do that. If you want to give someone more than one and a half percent, what would be the procedure there?
I think we did that previously with Deb.
Yeah, we gave Deb a bump. I try to, like, I try to with our employees, when they do their evaluation, I grade everybody, and they get a certain, you know, percentage, and then I base their merit increase on that percentage from their evaluation. In the case of Deb, which was last year, Deb was doing so many more things, and that I wanted to reward her because I really appreciated everything she'd been doing. So I came to you guys to get a little bit more money.
So you have a mechanism to give someone.
Not everybody automatically gets 1.5%.
No, but, but, I mean, there are some cases, maybe, okay.
Extraordinary.
So the mechanism will be come back here, I guess.
If we come to you guys.
Your mechanisms, you come back, what's if you want to go beyond this?
Yeah, exactly.
That's fine.
We're in discussion. Any motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, we got the personnel on the front page done, and we got the health insurance, Amy?
Yes. So we, I, one of our employees asked me to look into this. We currently ask that our employees that have more than single coverage under our health insurance plan pay 20% of the cost for dependent coverage. And so what we do is we subtract the employee rate out of the family coverage amount, and then charge them the 20% difference. We currently have three employees who have more than single coverage. In looking at the rest of the center region, we have, one of the greatest things that came out of the pandemic is we have a regional HR group that is just all the people that do the HR, the officers basically in the region. It's such a boon to find information. So I reached out to them. Our contribution rate was slightly higher than the majority of the other municipalities. So we have money sitting in the insurance reserve fund. So I'm proposing that we lower the employee contribution to 15%. So it would be, we'd subtract out still the employee rate from the family coverage, but they would pay then 15%. And that we use $4,797 from the health insurance reserve fund to cover that additional cost to the township. And I just wanted to get a feedback if you're okay with that.
That's a reverse perspective?
I'm fine with that.
How much are we talking? I mean, if they're going for, if they're 20%, how much do they pay? And how much would they pay? How many, what's that difference? Is it a million bucks, or five bucks, or a hundred bucks? What is that? Just ballpark. I don't need the exact.
Yeah, it's about $100.
So that $100?
Dollars a month? Okay.
That comes out of our insurance reserve fund.
Yes.
We got that back, we custom paid into it.
Yes.
Yes.
Their benefits for everybody.
Yeah.
You're not going to get a note from me for that.
I mean, that'll save that employee gets $100 a month back into their paycheck then.
Well, there is another, yeah, that's okay, but I noticed the call, whenever you do not get, whenever you don't cost us the family, or you get a 15 or 10% increase in income, because if you don't, we don't, I have just something to think about. The ones that don't have the family, yeah, they, the ones that do not have the family plan, just have the individual plan, they get a percentage more, because they don't, because they don't cost the COG that much money.
It's something that, it's funny talking about studies, but something that we need to look at as we move forward next year. We have this health insurance reserve account, and in the past, when we got our first reserve, our first rebates back, we sent, went back to the employees and we said, okay, if you're paying more than family coverage, the board's going to give you, we gave them three months amnesty, we called it, off of paying their insurance for three months, because we wanted to say thank you for the good claims years. But we don't really aside from that, and we used it for some of the stuff we did, the severance package stuff we did for the employee who just retired. But we haven't really used it, so it'd be kind of good if we came up with a good policy for that insurance reserve fund, and that might be something you want to look into. Because you want to be equal, you know, the employees that have single coverage don't pay anything, but they're still using claims, which costs the township money.
Do you have any anticipated health kind of issues coming down the road for many employees?
I'm not allowed to ask.
They can tell us.
I'm not allowed to ask those questions by law. That is a.
We ran into a major medical thing a couple of years ago. Just tied us up a lot.
Everybody, everybody's injured a couple of years ago.
Just a reclamation, I remember, to be clear. So right now, we pay the employee his own full coverage, right?
We pay his full coverage.
And then for the extra dependent coverage is what costs them the money.
Yes, they pay the difference.
And when they do, are there different levels of that? Are there employee and spouse, and then employee, spouse, and dependent children?
Employee, spouse, and family.
Okay. So those are different rates, and so they have to pay a, you know, different. Okay, that's good.
Wait, I think Frank has.
I just, I just, I probably asked this last time, and I can't remember the answer. Do we offer an HSA at all?
We have an HRA. We have an FSA and an HRA, and that's something actually I should mention. Our HRA is what we fund our health and our vision and our dental from. It's an $1,800 per person benefit. It's been very popular with our employees. It works very well. The FSA is a voluntary program, so anybody can join that. The HRA and the FSA right now have been housed by a company called Task. We've had them since we got them. Task completely changed everything they did, and it's been nothing but a nightmare for the last year. So Benicon, who does our health insurance, is building us an HRA plan that mirrors what we have now, and will run the FSA for us, and will actually be a little bit.
Well, I will tell you this, HSAs, and I was under an HSA, and when my, when we put it in, it was, the people loved it. It is, it is more of a benefit than you can ever imagine, because, because it is their money. They open an account for the HSA money to go in. It goes into, they can pick any bank they want, and it goes with them for, when they retire, you can use it for paying things after retirement. It is your money. After you put so much in it, you get interest on it. You can invest it. So an HSA is a very, very powerful tool for employees, and it's a great thing. And you talked about your, when I was, when I had the kids and everything, all I had to do every year was saying, okay, I know I'm going to need a pair of glasses. And I looked, and I said, okay, here's how much I need in my HSA. I put that in, it come out of my check. It comes out before taxes. It's tax exempt. So you, it's like getting a raise. When I put, when I took money out of my account for my HSA, I had, my take home was higher. So it is a good program, and I think we ought to have them look at it.
Well, it's, okay, that's what the school district uses right now. That's the most popular. There's two different plans we can use, and one of them has, it's a high deductible plan with an HSA that the school district contributes to. Doesn't fully cover the deductible, but you can contribute more money to it voluntarily, pre-tax. And so whatever your medical, you anticipate medical expenses, and personally, I have, I've contributed, you know, a couple thousand a year to it tax, you know, pre-tax to cover, cover the.
We're pretty fortunate in that our health insurance plan does not have any deductibles. It's all copays.
It's fine. I would look at Nate, I would look at an HSA.
If you don't have deductibles, then that's a different story. You pay for the insurance, and you go, and it's all covered, then kind of the need for an HSA disappears. But the high deductible plans are the ones that come with the HSAs, and I don't know if.
Well, I will tell you this. When we first put it in, and I, this was when I was working at Lesher, when we first put it in, it was an option. The first year, 30% of our employees, and we had about 400, 500 employees, about 30% of our employees took it. Within three years, every employee was on it, because they just, it was, it was voluntary. We had two programs. You could pick which one you wanted. Within three years, everybody was on the high deductible HSA. Because what happens is, like you said, you put some money in, and at the beginning, Lesher used to match it, just like the school district. And you get a card. I swore, and we had nothing, we had no payments, because your health insurance goes way down. Your premiums go way down. So we had no, nothing came out of our paycheck for the premiums. And we could put in, and like, for example, I think you can put up to like $7,000, $6,500, $7,000 if you want, and that money goes with you. It's yours. It stays in that account. It's under your name. If you leave the, if you leave the employer, that goes with you. The employer has no touch on that money once it goes into that account.
Right. So let me tell you a couple of things that are a little bit different here.
You participate in a health consortium, which is a self-funded plan. So the high deductible thing doesn't really apply, because you pay, you basically pay claims. That's why you're getting refunds back at the end of the year. So the HSA only works if you have an indemnity plan, like you're talking about, where you actually pay premiums, and you have a high deductible. Without that, you really can't have an HSA. So your FSAs can do the things you're talking about, except it's limited in the amount of carryover.
Well, I think you're going to find.
That was the program Lesher had. We paid, we paid our own.
You.
We have to check with Benicon on that.
Well, I'm just saying.
The consortium makes us self-insure.
Yeah, we are self-insured.
And so it's a different animal than just a buying straight insurance.
Look into it. I think it'd be a good thing to look into.
Do you want a motion on this, Amy?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do we have one?
No.
Okay.
You want, we're going to get one.
Well, we've got to get one. Give me a motion.
We always just have to say so moved. So come on.
Hey, I'm making you think. Sorry.
All in favor, so move.
Oh, my goodness. Make an actual motion.
Any objections?
Well, I make a motion that we lower the dependent cost from 20% to 15%, and take it out of the health insurance reserve fund to cost it.
Second.
Discussion we've had. All in favor? Say the favor saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Got it, Amy.
Okay. And then the last thing on our agenda is just the maintenance budget, which you went over basically last week with the capital budget. So I'll answer any questions that you have, if there's anything you'd like to look at in the budget at all. If not, the budget gets tentatively adopted Monday night, goes out for a public inspection, and then you have your public hearing and adoption on December the 13th.
I think the only capital issue we had was the sequential paving.
Which we answered.
Of Pike.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions on the CPI that we needed to hit?
Or the general maintenance budget?
Okay.
Yes, Frank.
What were your pages?
I want, I want page D2.
Oh, we're in the budget.
And this is, this is a question. You know, I'm looking here, and we're budgeting more money for brush and leaf collection. Didn't we buy that fancy new machine to make it quicker and easier to do that? Didn't our costs go down?
That's personnel for brush and leaf collection. That's their payroll.
Yeah, the little mini excavator thing?
Yeah, that's their, that's their payroll expense.
Well, shouldn't that take it down a little bit?
No, it doesn't. Actually, it's Dwight. Dwight and I are laughing.
It should take half the time.
Dwight and I had this whole conversation, and I was like.
It's all about allocation. You're not going to pay any more or any less across the organization. It's what, what their hours get allocated to. So yes.
Well, that machine was proposed to us. Didn't we tell us how much greater and quicker we would do this stuff?
Safer.
It's safer. It's much safer.
I've watched it, I've worked on it either, you know. It makes those things a lot easier. We have more and more leaves.
To pick up from more and more development.
We're becoming, we're planting more trees. We're becoming more.
Trees are getting better. Any other issues on the CPI for, Nigel wasn't here, the first CPI discussion. Do you have any red flags on there?
Nope.
Okay.
Oh, one question. Is our culvert up on Main Street costing us more money? Are we all right on the budget?
We're fine on the budget.
Okay.
And that's it?
Well, yeah, we had, we had to make it concrete, so the fish can go across the stream.
So yesterday, they were putting it in, this is just a funny aside, and Jerry took me up to look at it. And I was taking videos. I was like, oh, I'll put video on the Facebook page. And I went to upload the video, and in the video, I got one of the contractors going, please fit, please fit, please fit, please fit. And I was like, I'm not putting that on the Facebook page. I just put a picture.
Well, I understand we have to increase that, because it's so the fish can go through there.
We did. That was.
And there's no fish been in that thing for 55 years.
Yes.
They're little fish.
They are little fish.
They're Swedish fish.
Silverfish.
Yeah. You should see the size of the fish thing they did when they put the bridge in on Rockhill Road. It's very sophisticated kind of thing.
Yeah.
Ripples in it to make sure the fish go slowly, and, oh, yeah.
I finally know why it's called a box culvert. I looked at the guy from John Clary yesterday, and I go, oh, my God, it does look like a box.
Oh, God.
Yeah, two pieces. Anything else? Make a motion, Jerry.
You got it.
All right.
All in favor? Bye.
I'll get back and finish my job now.
I'm sorry we bothered you.